...the 1,700th meeting of the College Place City Council called that quarter at 7:00 PM. Mr. Cleveland, would you please say our prayer and give our pledge of allegiance?
Certainly. Dear Lord, we ask that you bless this day, our meeting, and that you watch over our city and its citizens. I'd like to offer our thanks that the incident that occurred last week at our school was handled well and resulted in no loss of life, and that our community is clearly pulled together afterwards. That amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the good public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So it's now our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council can step forward to the microphone, state your name and address.
Hey, my name is Jerry Bobbitt. I do it 0319 Southeast Rock Avenue, and I just want to go on the public record and say a good thank you to the City of College Place for those wonderful flag banners that line College Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, citizen.
Thank you, Mr. Bobbitt. Anyone else wishing to address the College Place City Council can step forward, state your name and address.
Hello there, I'm Jed Selby, 0301 Southwest 10th, by the way. But here, you're all planning on asking a word about fireworks. So, at least as I understand it, you want to ban it on both 4th of July and New Year's. However, I disagree, and fireworks are a good classic, a celebration, and should be a lot of special things like 4th of July and New Year's Eve. And I'd actually also like to remove the restrictions of no fireworks during the winter, probably from now November to April or so. Because it's mostly in the winter, so you're not really going to set many people's crops on fire. And the sundown is early enough that you may be allowed to set stuff off at, you know, 8:00 in the morning, not really disturbing for many people. It's just, you know, it's awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the College Place City Council can step forward and state your name and address.
Seeing them, we have a consent agenda before us, approving this evening's agenda, approve the council minutes from May 23rd, approving the check register of finances for April 2017, confirming plan for mission appointments, approving this consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, are we approval of the consent agenda?
It's removed by the Senate, seconded by the Zaha- Haagen. All of the changes signify by Senate.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion passes unanimously through the committee. Presentation, great safe FCS group.
Yes.
Ms. Kildore.
Thank you. I am introducing Angie Sanchez from FCS Group this evening. She's here via telephone and web connection. She's the principal in charge of our wastewater rate study this year and was also in charge of our water rate study last year. And she is going to...
I found an entry about turns on Wikipedia.
She is going to give you a presentation on rate setting tonight as a kind of a prelim to our wastewater rate study results presentations. So Angie, are you with us?
Yes.
Okay.
I am with you.
I'm going to hand it over to you.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me on this remote session. We'll see how this goes. If at any point in time we, you know, something looks funny, please feel free to, if that's a time limit, let me know, and we'll correct it as soon as we can. And so, as Sarah had mentioned, we are going to... Are you on to the next slide? There we go. So we are going to essentially complete a wastewater utility rate study, which we have very similarly completed a water rate study last year. And what this particular study will also include is when we look in two different areas, one being the monthly rate. And so we're looking at the monthly rate that people pay for operating and also on debt service, which are different components that your rates include. And so we're going to be looking at the monthly rate. But we're also going to come back and look at your connection charges. And your connection charges are those fees that new customers coming in who are continually connecting to the system pay in order to connect to the facilities and receive service. And so we'll be looking at those two particular areas. Really, what the workshop tonight is intended to do is just to, again, get everybody on the same page regarding the rate setting process and what key elements we are looking at when we start embarking on this rate process. And we know really what should be we thinking about, what should it be including, what does self-sufficient utility mean, and what costs are we including when we face that. But more importantly, we would like to receive the council's input in terms of what are the particular concerns, issues, priorities, questions that you have. So as we're working through this particular process before we get to draft results, that we understand a little bit about what we should be coming back for and having ready to answer for you all, and so that you feel that you have an informed process moving forward. And so that's really one of the more key areas of this particular process as well. So in terms of why we, you know, conduct so utility rate studies, really what we're trying to do is it's going to enable us to remain self-sufficient. And the other key when you're dealing with enterprise funds and utilities that are supported by the fees that are charged, if we want to understand, you know, what are our operating and our capital needs. And so we have ongoing operating costs that are important and we see, you know, routinely and regularly. But we also have capital needs that we have, and sometimes those capital needs are, you know, something that we see recurring, but sometimes there was kind of expenses that we need to be investing in in terms of our system. And so a key point here on the capital is that we are kind of in the middle point with your wastewater treatment facility plan that's actually going to come back in terms of that treatment plant and provide us with a better understanding of what the upcoming capital needs are for the treatment plant. And so we'll be infusing that at a later date. The initial discussion that we'll have with you on the 27th, we'll be including just kind of what we know about today and what we need to be recovering, but we will come back at a later date and recalibrate and help you understand what the staff facility plan needs in terms of upcoming needs. We obviously want our rates to cover our needs, and so that's a key thing that we're looking at. But we also want to account for changing conditions. And so although we may have to be working off of an approved budget and approved capital improvement plan, we want to make sure that we're infusing reality in terms of what we're looking at. And so if we're seeing declining sales, or we know we're either recovering or going into some type of economic cycle, we want to make sure that we're putting reality in terms of what this forecast is going to help us look at, because we are actually looking at this for, you know, multi-year time periods. We can go out 20 years, but technically for the rate setting period, we want to go something shorter than that. And so we'll be talking about that on the 27th as well. Also, we want to ensure rate-related utility policies and priorities. And so we want it to be equitable. We want to make sure that we have revenue stability and financial sustainability. But we also understand that, you know, these are real costs to real people, and so we want to be looking at affordability, you know, what kind of afford... How affordable are we? Is there anything that we're going to be doing in terms of making this a balance to go to your customers? So the overview of the rate setting process, so there's only two major steps that we're going to be including. And so the first one is fiscal policies we'll be looking at, and I'm going to find... Go ahead.
Oh, we're not changing slides in sync with what you're talking about.
We're not. That's what I'm afraid of.
There we are.
Am I now?
Yep.
Okay. So you're not giving a full, like, formative presentation most of those, so I apologize for that. Do you see a sidebar?
Yes.
Okay. So are you in the overview of the rate setting process?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So we're going to have two steps that we're looking at. And so the first step is what we call defining the revenue requirements. And the revenue requirements are composed of not only your direct costs, such as operating, capital, debt, service, and your treatment plant costs, but also indirect costs, because to be self-sufficient, we need to meet our direct costs, but we also have fiscal policies that we need to be maintaining. So we should be holding a certain level of reserve, we should be reinvesting in our system routinely. We also, if we have debt, need to be meeting certain debt service coverage requirements for our bondholders. And so we're looking at both of those things, direct costs and indirect costs, when we're identifying what your revenue requirements are. But we are making allowances for, you know, the rate revenue that you have coming in, any other miscellaneous revenue that you have coming in, and those connection charges from new customers as well. Those are revenue sources that we have available to us to help meet our overall revenue requirements. Now, when we get set, we finally, you know, identify what those annual revenue requirements are, we can then move to rate design, which is then how we collect those particular costs from our customers. And do we select it through a fixed charge, a variable charge, or a combination of those particular charges? So we'll be looking at what we currently do today, and if we have any recommendations for our organization moving forward. So we're going to start with the utility fiscal policies, and these are strictly put in here because they are what we had looked at on the water side of things. And so these are some of the things that we want council to be thinking about in terms of, you know, do we agree with some of those particular policies? Do we want all of them, put them in the wastewater? Are there, you know, maybe some areas that we want to change a little bit? We wanted to give you an idea of what the fiscal policies we'll be coming back with in terms of the wastewater and kind of where that may lead you in terms of a target for the wastewater if we use those particular name policies. And really, we've got these particular policies simply because they help us with our financial management, to remain consistent in terms of what we're... how we're managing our utilities, and also to protect us from, you know, unforeseen financial impacts. We want to be prepared for anything that may come and surprise us. So the first one's the operating reserve. We want to set those because we want to accommodate differences in revenue expense or types of inflows and outflows of our cash. Industry standard, you know, is from anywhere from 30 to probably 120 days, very typical, it's 60 days to 90 days. And so for the water, we set it at 50 days. And so if we set that same 50-day target, that particular target for wastewater would be about 340, about 410,000 per year. And so that's kind of something that we say, that might be something we want to be thinking about, should we not have that particular direct policy today. Capital contingency reserve, you mean? Since we need emergency repairs or unanticipated capital project cost overruns, we set that at $500,000 annually. This might be something that we'll generally talk to your engineer about, to identify if we had an emergency type of situation, emergency repair, what would we want to have in our savings account? So I kind of see this as this is kind of the operating, kind of a checking account, we want to keep a minimum. The capital contingency is more in our savings account. What do we want to have set aside so that if there was an emergency, we feel like we'd be able to cover that particular emergency? And so we did set it at 500,000 for water. These are soft targets, so we're not going to increase rates necessarily in order to get you to this particular target in year 1. It might be a target that we want to try to reach in year 6, 10, et cetera. System reinvestment funding is a really big issue in terms of a lot of utilities. We always hear about aging infrastructure, are we funding enough for replacement? This is such a particular area that I have been missing in a lot of rate studies that we complete. The good news is that on the water side of things, you all have quite extensive discussion in terms of, you know, how do you begin funding that particular component, and are on your way in terms of doing so. And so I believe it was starting at about $100,000 per year, increasing over time, so we can use that same approach as well. But here, what we're thinking about is there is infrastructure in the ground, it is aging, it will need eventual replacement. How do we begin to generate funds so that we have sufficient funding available to replace that data infrastructure when it is needed? And so many times, we'll include a component in your rate that existing rate carriers are paying that will go towards system replacement funding. And to think about it, really, you know, those people who are using the system should really be putting funds away for the system that they're using today. So they're wearing out, they're using the system, they're just kind of slowly reinvesting in the system with part of the rates that they're paying on an ongoing basis. And again, this can be slowly ramped in over time. We will figure out what the exact target is for the particular sewer utility, but something to be thinking about in terms of those philosophical approach. And then finally, debt service coverage, well, that's something that really we're not to kind of are required to do if you have already to have a revenue bond. And so that's compliance with existing debt covenants and maintenance credit ordinance for future debt needs. The minimum requirement generally in your covenants is 1.25 generally, to either recommend it to target something higher, 1.50. I've heard that some of the financial advisors are having to target it to get higher than that, so that they're not downgraded. So again, something to be monitoring and making sure that we're keeping in compliance. And so these are the fiscal policies that we use to kind of build this brain or around how we manage our particular utility. And so if there's anything that concerns you, or anything that you have questions of, we can address that and begin into the latter part of the presentation with council In terms of the role of the revenue requirement, so actually, you want to the technical piece that we'll be completing, we're going to come back, if we're able, and tell you your financial plan, and we'll be using your budget as a basis and then forecasting forward in terms of a 20-year time period with, again, this being what we would hope to be able to, what we call the looking document, we want you to come back and during budget, we kind of revisit this particular financial plan to make sure that your rate strategy that we developed holds, and if not, you know, what path would we identify what's talking enough to be able to hold that rate plan. So it really does help in terms of explaining what those differences are in planning. We are looking at the amount of revenue necessary to meet all of your utility financial obligations, so direct and indirect, so we have operating costs, treatment costs, capital costs, debt service, as well as fiscal policies that we establish. When we look at the revenue requirement, we are evaluating rates at your current rate level. So there's never an assumption that you will have to increase rates. We're looking at what our overall revenue means. We're going to compare that to what we're actually generating today. If it's sufficient, wonderful, good news, you know, there's not going to be any type of rate proposals. However, you know, if they give a threshold that we're deficient, then we develop a rate strategy on an annual basis in order to recommend for rate implementation. And so we always all in it with evaluating current rates and not assuming that there will be a rate increase. You need to, sorry, go back a little bit. You need to, you however, is that you do have an operating rate and a debt service rate, and so we are actually looking kind of at those two particular cost categories separately and distinctly in order to set those particular rates. In terms of how we define revenues and expenses, again, we will essentially begin with your approved budget, and so it's something that'll be very familiar to you. And then we'll usually apply various different installation factors depending on each of your particular account line items. So we might do a general line item by CPI, we might do a by the economic, excuse me, the employment cost index, get to capital, maybe by engineering, new record construction cost index, in order to get this to those future years that we're using, published indices, and averages usually by 10 years in order to get your costs out into the future that will be anticipated based on history. Other issues that we'll look at again, is this a normal year, or do we need to adjust our revenue or fills for something different? If our budget has any one-time expenses that we need to be including or adjusting, you know, in or out? Do we have any changes coming up that we know about for utilities or chemicals, anything like that? And also, we have operational changes, so whether they be, you know, enhanced programs and initiatives that you're marking on, or even staff additions, what is applicable, how your financial plan will allow us to do, if not only look at the budget year, but look at it as a future plan, anticipate where we may need to go in the future and how we best get there with minimal impact on our customers. In terms of probably your biggest cost, and your capital costs generally, and so what we want to do is spend a little bit of time talking about those three, the capital cost and funding. And so generally, again, what we're going to look to is for the city, so with your staff, do you identify any capital improvement plans that you have, system plans, or asset management plans that will identify what our future infrastructure needs are on an annual basis? And so we do complete this analysis on an annual basis, operating, you know, debt service, et cetera, so that we understand what your overall annual needs are. And ideally, what we've come to understand is that really the optimal capital funding is a combination of cash and debt. And you all are doing that in your water utilities, so I anticipate that it's likely similar for your wastewater utility. And here on the table, we just kind of have some pros and cons about cash funding versus debt funding. I know there's sometimes some reluctance on, in some cities and some councils, to go after debt in terms of debt funding. You know, sometimes people want to just have cash funding. A lot of times, unfortunately, you know, we just don't have enough cash to be able to fund our overall needs. But there are reasons to actually debt finance something, you know, whether it be a low interest rate, or you're really trying to capitalize on the low interest rates in the market. But also the type of capital that you have really might lend itself to debt financing better. So if it's a long-life asset and future customers are going to benefit from that, it might make more sense to debt finance a large capital cost so that you are essentially getting generational equity, so not only on the back of the rate tiers today, but you're going to be paying for that capital project for those particular customers that are actually going to be in their structure. So there's definitely pros and cons of cash and debt funding, but I think the city is definitely trying to have a good balance of that in terms of the other utilities when it's okay to say. But that's another philosophical discussion that I'd love to hear about in terms of what your, the council's opinions are of that as well. So system reinvestment funding, we talked a little bit about earlier, and again, that's the religious thing, your utility infrastructure, and every year we lose value over time and ultimately will need to be replaced. And many times, too, if we are continuing not to reinvest in our system, what's happening is that we're going to see increased maintenance costs. So how do we find that balance in terms of, you know, reinvesting in our system, balancing, you know, rate payer impact, but also understanding that once we are still kind of kicking the can down the road, that is likely that we're going to have increased maintenance costs? And so working with engineering, consulting engineers, that's kind of one of the questions that we were always asking ourselves is, you know, how much system reinvestment should we be putting away or should we be doing? And, you know, how do we, how do we make sure that we're at least putting a little bit aside in order to make sure that we're keeping our system into repair? Because it also affects service levels as well. And so if the council has a certain service level that it wants to deliver, many times if we're not reinvesting in our system, that's going to become more and more difficult to actually accomplish. And so it's an important part of the long-term asset management plan. I think we probably all, we all hear about these buzzwords that we've allowed at various different conferences and literature. It does provide a similar liability and integrity, and it involves generating cash above the current operating costs and debt requirements. So this is kind of a new component that we're adding, saying, you have your operating costs, if you have already issued debt, you're going to have your debt requirement. This is another component that we're really starting to want people to think about, which is how much should we be funding on a consistent basis from our rates annually? And so that's that third bullet here, is consistent cash amount from current rate. We don't want to have the volatility of our capital projects and our rates. We want a consistent level of cash that we're going to be able to put aside, that when we look at our total capital plan on a long-term basis, we'll hopefully be able to meet a lot of our needs with that particular funding source. And again, save for current remodel replacement, that are in our remodel replacement projects, or it can be saved in a fund to pay for future capital projects. And so as I mentioned before, we have included that component in the water utility and slowly over time, increasing it to very different target levels, which also provides an area for wastewater as well. So in terms of the rate study components, when we come back to you, essentially on annual basis, this is what we're looking at in terms of how we establish overall... And so as I've mentioned, the city rules you need is that it has an operating cost, and it has very specified debt costs, and they also have rates associated with recovering various different costs. And so when we look at our operating costs, we're looking at the operating maintenance, and we're looking at what level of rate funded capital we may need in that point to make our revenue requirement for our operating rate. We'll be aligning miscellaneous revenues that we have available to us, and the remaining need will be the amount that we need to generate from our monthly rates on an ongoing basis. Similar with your debt costs, we're going to look at your debt service fund and identify what is the beginning balance of your debt fund, what kind of existing debt do you have on an annual basis? Are we assuming any new debt? We have to hold a certain target balance, and then basically that will define the amount of revenue that we need for our debt service rate. And you'll see there's kind of some very different arrows going back and forth here. This is where capital comes in. And so when we're looking at your operating costs, how capital affects it is through the rate funded capital component here. Because overall, in this particular analysis, we're looking at what are your total annual capital obligations, but we're also trying to use other funding sources that you have available to you to optimize how we're going to fund your capital. So we're going to look at contributions from brands and developers, we're going to look at any connection charges that you have coming in, we're going to assume, again, that if we simply fund this component, that you're going to have on an annual basis, rate funded capital to help pay some of those annual obligations, and then possibly cash reserves available. You know, anything that's not funded by these very different resources that we have will likely have to be debt funded. And so that's kind of what we need to hear. If we debt fund anything, that means that now it now becomes a new debt obligation, which then identifies that we might need to increase our debt rate in terms of what we're charging to our customers. And so that's how this particular arrow is affecting our particular rates, and that if we issue debt, it's going to have an impact on our debt cost. If we rate fund capital, it's likely going to have an impact on our operating rate. Okay? And then a final arrow here, and again, basically this is also saying, we're also looking at your current fund balance to identify, you know, what is our beginning balance? We want to hold, let's say that 50 days that we were talking about, and anything above that overall target is then going to be available for capital. So really trying to optimize, you know, what are our costs, what are our capital needs, what are our operating debt needs, and trying to optimize all of your resources that we could use, that we can use fully. And so this is probably the key slide, and if you're going to take it away, anything from the evening, that would be something to kind of go back steady, because as we read back the numbers, this is going to be kind of how that methodology is going to play out for you. So once we get to those particular analysis, we have two tests. The first one is a more complex cash flow test, and it's basically saying, what are my existing revenue sources that I have available for operating in debt and capital? What are my overall obligations? And do I have a deficiency or sufficiency of funds? And if I have a deficiency, that might mean that I need to have rate increases. We also are going to collect a cover, a condensed coverage test. And coverage is that debt service coverage requirement required by bondholders if you have revenue bonds. And again, they're looking so that you are trying to meet a 1.25 minimum annual debt service, and so we'll be monitoring that and making sure that you stay above that. There are situations in some entities that they really don't necessarily need a rate increase for cash, they actually need a rate increase simply just to meet their minimum debt service coverage requirement. And so again, we're going to do those two tests and make sure that you meet both of them. And again, we'll come back with revenue requirement balances in the multi-year rate stress. That's really what we're trying to look at. Do we have overall sufficiency on an annual basis? If not, how might we develop a rate strategy on an annual basis to be able to meet our needs over time and our goals over time? So once we have established what our revenue requirement is, we can then go to rate design. Now that we know how much money in total we need to be collecting, how do we collect those particular costs from our customers? And so rate design really talks about, you know, what is the rate structure that covers that part of the level of revenue? It is extremely important because essentially, that's your primary communication with your customers. You know, when they get their bill, they're going to make some type of judgment call on you, is it right, is it low, is it about right? And so rate design becomes very important in terms of how we communicate as well as structure it. It is composed of fixed and/or variable charges, so depending on what type of utility we're dealing with, you know, they're sewer utilities, they may have mini utilities, particularly traffic charges, and they might have on that commercial side, a fixed and variable, but maybe their residential side is just a hundred and fifty. Water utilities definitely have fixed and variable, and you all, as we'll show you in the next slide, have a combination as well. And so it's going to be composed very differently, with the overall objective being it needs to recover the part of the level of revenue that we've identified. So for a couple bases, we'll come back to you and say, this is the amount of revenue that we need to basically generate. But sometimes, obviously, there's other considerations in terms of policies considerations. And so you might like one structure over another, because maybe it's useful, like to provide more equity in terms of the rate. Or a little bit easier to understand or implement in terms of a particular rate structure, rate impact, or also, you know, key in terms of a level of rate design and rate structure. Instead of providing more revenue stability or predictability, that can be a consideration as well, but also social objectives, such as affordability or economic development, or maybe sending you various different price signals in terms of your particular rate structure. What is the overall, you know, city priority in terms of how they would like their rate structured and what type of messaging they're actually having in terms of their rate structure? And so that's very unique to that particular city and the long-term waste and polishing Have such a high on the current wastewater rate structure. And see how the residential, excuse me, includes a lot of your multifamily classes, so it's people family, multifamily, family and apartment home. And then you have a small flow commercial and a large flow commercial. And what is the distinguishing factor between these particular is the amount of mill flow they have. And so the small flow is less than 25,000 gallons, and the large flow is greater than 25,000 gallons. So that's the distinguishing factor there. Rates are composed of only three components, so base rate, a debt service rate or charge, and then a variable charge. At different times, because of the debt, you know, what you're trying to recover, the debt service charge did not change, it's what you have in $15 for the loudmouth. We look at your particular rate structure, what's important to us is the fixed and variable split in terms of that you have, because one of the objectives of rate structure is revenue stability. And so when we look at how much you're generating from your fixed charges versus... And so when we look at how much you're generating from your fixed charges versus your variable charges, without the debt service charge included, you're about 77% fixed revenue coming in from your structure and 23% variables. If we included the debt service equivalent, 84% fixed. So that's a pretty good structure in terms of revenue stability and predictability. So it goes on that particular area. But how your particular rates actually play out is on this table down below. And so again, consider residential here. You have a base rate of 2599, debt service is 16. And then over 3,000 gallons for the residential and small flow commercials, you're charged $3.75 per thousand gallon. Large flow commercial is a little different, does not have the base charges. And it has to still all consume at 675. So a little bit different there. And we may come out with different recommendations, but that is your current structure today. So that when we come back, we'll be able to compare in terms of what you're doing today versus what may be changed we might want to see or that you all like to see we come back with. So because of the two major areas we're going to be covering and coming back with the actual numbers for your particular water utility, seven. And so there's a revenue requirement, which is your overall revenue needs. And then back to the rate strategy. And then rate design, okay, now that I have know how much, you know, overall revenue I need to increase, what does that rate structure look like? Is it similar to what we have today or is it increasing the total amount? Or are we going to constantly do something different with a base charge, debt service charge and a volume charge? And so with that, as I said, again, one of the more important parts we wanted to open up to this evening is counsel input in terms of some of the policies that we talked about, maybe some issues, concerns, priorities that you all have that we will want to be able to think about as we develop the overall draft results that we'll come back with on the 27th.
Any questions from the council? Ms. Silver?
Hi. I'm not clear on if we have a break in cost for people who are low income or fixed income? And if so, how that works and what kind of an impact it has on our revenue?
So is my understanding that there is a discount for certain low-income senior and low-income disabled citizens? And so there are requirements that they have to meet however? And so what we can do is make sure to maybe have a slide on that in terms of what the requirements are, what that policy is and the program. And then it sounds like you're wanting to know maybe how much of a cost or subsidy you're providing?
Exactly. Because I am in favor of that. But I also want to make sure that we take it into account as we do our revenue projections and we don't end up with less revenue than we expected because of these discounts.
Sure, sure.
Especially since we have a fairly large retirement population here, which is a good thing as far as I'm concerned.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, so we'll summarize kind of the program for you, what your requirements are and everybody was qualified. And so there are, I believe there's income requirement to that. And then we'll follow a little bit about the possible, you know, how much are we, if we were to charge those individuals a full rate versus the rate that we're charging today, what is the subsidy that's occurring in total?
Great, thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Hi, this is Lauren. Slide 13. You know, one of the things I've struggled with, conservation of water. I believe that the city potentially, as water is consumed, our revenue is increased or enhanced. But sometimes that's counterintuitive as far as looking into the future as far as water conservation. So your analysis, you spoke briefly about this, but the relationship of variable fees versus fixed. And I also understand on the other side of the argument would be, or discussion would be, for people that use excess amounts of water, that they should, you know, generally speaking, they should pay more. What are your, and you may not be prepared to answer this right now, but what are, as you look at other cities, where is this headed? This process of fixed versus variable on water consumption?
Yeah, so I would say, they caught a lot of people. So historically, for all, a lot of utilities really. Sewer would maybe be a little different because historically a lot of utilities would charge strictly a flat, you know, per account rate for their residential customers. There was a time when people were moving to a more progressive rate structure, which is actually what you all have, I would say, is more progressive rate structure, which is trying to include a base plus a variable component. So I would say probably the more common is a residential rate that's just a fixed flat rate for all accounts. So regardless of usage, it's just a fixed rate. So there were a lot of individuals, a lot of entities, excuse me, that decided that they wanted to move more towards, again, trying to set a pricing of low on the water on the sewer side. Because you're going to pay more over a certain amount. Historically, however, in terms of the split, it's like to say the 77 and the 23% split that we're seeing here, a lot of utilities, especially on the larger side, probably are more, were more in the 25 to 30% fixed in the majority of the variables. Well, when people come back, if there was a wet year, you know, various different things can change in terms of, you know, economic changes or weather changes, et cetera. That can change how people are going to be in your service. And so a lot of people got caught in terms of not having revenue stability. So the trend has been that people want to get a higher percentage in their fix. So again, they can have more revenue stability and predictability. Does that answer your question?
Sure. So you're saying in the future they're moving, right, I understand. Yes, great, thank you.
For sure, yeah. And we can, you know, absolutely, you know, come back and then more fully, you know, kind of give you some examples as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Dinkerson?
Hi, this is Larry. Along that same line of Lauren's idea on page 13, I would like to see included in this study the feasibility of increasing allowance water usage as we increase fees. I don't know that it's feasible, but I'd like to see that in the study. Because not all residences are created equal. And so if we have the water, I would like to see if we should increase that with our fees.
So just to make sure I'm understanding. So right now, with your residential customer, you have included in your base rate 3,000 gallons of water per month. And so you're thinking maybe that would increase to $5,000, the 5,000 gallons, excuse me?
Or even 3,500.
Or your cut better, okay.
Kind of keep it in low increments, but kind of keep a parallel?
Mm-hmm. So one thing just to mention, and I, because sometimes this also isn't just well-known, is that the city is also doing a good thing, which is they are billing your volume based on average winter water flow. So making sure that you are not including any type of water use that has to do with irrigation that's not impacting the sewer system. And so that's, just to make sure that we're on the page there, also is that we're really trying to isolate in terms of average winter water use with what the indoor use is that you're actually billing consumption on and not, you know, any type of irrigation.
So do you think it's possible to include that in the study?
Yeah, I'll go back and look at our budget and the information that we have and see if we have enough, you know, statistics in order to be able to do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Silver?
Hi, this is Melody again. And you talked about growth paying for growth. Does this include, this study include looking at our hookup fees?
It does, yes. So the first analysis on the 27th that we're going to come back with is strictly going to be your ongoing monthly rates. So these rates that you see here. And so we're gathering additional data. So we kind of have to do a little bit more work to get some asset data and infrastructure data together. And so that, we are going to absolutely address that. It's going to be after the 27th, however.
Great, thank you.
And this is Melody. And I would also like to make a comment. You had a question of, do we prefer to pay cash or use debt service?
Yeah.
And if we were starting, you know, from scratch with a brand-new plant and no debt, I would love to see us be putting money aside so that we could have minimal debt when we're ready to need a new plant. However, given that we have debt and a plant that needs an upgrade, I think what we're going to need to do is work towards using less debt, but not try to eliminate our debt, you know, immediately or anytime in the short term, because I just don't think that's going to be practical.
Absolutely. Yeah, sometimes again, we haven't been sending money aside. Sometimes you really have to kind of get to a certain point first. And then we can, you know, have a little bit more balance in terms of the level of cash versus debt funding. And so absolutely right. So we will definitely keep that in mind.
Just a quick comment, you know, to that question. I think we obviously are going to have to wait, and you just alluded to that. We're going to have to wait until we see what rolls out from this analysis. Back to your slide 10. We don't know, right now, we do not know what the additional operating revenue would be that would reduce the amount of capital or debt that we'd have to issue. And so you agree with that? We're going to have to wait to see what the outcome of your operating revenue amounts are.
That for sure, but also recall that you are currently underway with your wastewater facility plan. And so that is going to give us really good information in terms of what your future needs are for your plant.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Other comments or questions? Moving right along.
Okay. Let me come back here. I think we're about done, almost done here. So next step, we're going to come back and present the draft study results on June 27. And based on what you've all provided, I appreciate the questions and input, we'll get some slides together to completely address those particular needs a little bit more fully. And we will come back and identify annual rate strategy for the cost that we know today. So again, I'm always going to kind of come back and just as a reminder, if your, after your facility plan is completed, we'll have some new capital that we'll want to be thinking about as well. And we'll have to recalibrate the plan, but we don't want to wait for that. We want to see where we are. So the rates for the time period selected, so about one to six years, again, was the option of, depending on what that plan says, we have to recalibrate. We will incorporate the feedback that we received this evening and as well as on the 27th. So we're going to come back, kind of show you some numbers, going to get some feedback in terms of those particular numbers. And there is different scenarios. So those of you that were involved in the water, you recall kind of having different scenarios to look at, to kind of chew on. And then we even came back with kind of some tweaks on those scenarios. So that's kind of the same process that we'll have here. We're hoping to have that completed so that we can look to have counsel presentation on July 25th and look for possible approval of the rate strategy. And then we'll come back with a connection charge or the new user charge analysis after July, once we get all the data together. So we're hoping again that once with this analysis, the decision is made for at least this initial period, that we would have rates effective till the end of January 1st, 2018, again, depending on what type of rate strategy is developed. And so that's kind of the next step. So that is all I have for you this evening. But I would love to be able to, again, if you have additional questions, I'm open to that and see if I can answer anything.
Other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Well, I thank you very much and thank you this evening for like, again, trying this remote. I think we had a little bit of a blip, but we'll get those buttons worked out. And so I appreciate the questions as well. It's always nice to have some engagement and making sure that we're going to come back and help you understand this process a little bit better.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
So, next up, Chief Demars.
Take a minute, too. Good evening. I was asked to just do a little brief of the origin. He said that heard last Thursday, John St. Michael School. Just kind of talk to me a little bit about what happened. It was about 1:44 in the afternoon. We received a call of an attack by two high school kids on the principal at John St. Michael School. At the time of the call, our one uniform officer was actually at the jail, looking inside of the jail. Detective Bateman responded from his office. Was actually the first one on scene along with two wall-to-wall police officers. I can tell you, I've seen the video and it's horrific. These two young men, very short young men, came into the school, broke into the reinforced class. And the principal was nothing short of a coward. Came out, confronted them, and they were supposed to attack him. They beat him like they wouldn't home style a club. And they also had some type of jabbering looking sphere. They took him to the ground, he didn't see the last trace of his face. It's kind of a strange turn of events. At one point, one of the kids actually helped the principal up off the ground. And then they went off camera. And immediately, when he said his two staff members came through and brought the fight back to the kids, never touched them, but just an intimidation factor forced the kids to retreat. They retreated outdoors about the time that our officer showed up on scene. At that time, one of the kids aggressively confronted Detective Bateman who used a patrol car. Very aggressive behavior. Detective Bateman did a fabulous job. He stayed in his car because if he had gotten out of the car, there would have been no alternative other than to use some sort of vehicle force. He did not have less lethal equipment than he used technically. He distracted the young man, while the wall-to-wall officer showed up on scene. And the wall-to-wall officer had a less lethal shotgun and was able to utilize that weapon. And shot the young man twice with that, that looked stunning him. And he retreated around at back of the school and was immediately taken to custody on the asset at school. The other young man was not resisting and gave up in front of the school just about the time that I arrived on scene. Myself and Sheriff Turner were actually with the mayor and emergency engine at the time to call him out. So we had tremendous response. In fact, the first officer, Captain Bateman, was on scene at the moment of the call, which is phenomenal. We initially, as soon as I got to scene, we initiated decent command. And in fact, it was a unified command with myself, Captain Chris Boudis, the wall-to-wall police officer showed up shortly thereafter. And so Sheriff Turner, and of course, my department back here, the fire department, Chief Winter, it was absolutely fantastic. So as a team, we completed the incident. We did a secondary cursory search of the school just to make sure it was comfortable. We communicated very well with the school district. And the kids at no time were ever injured. And that is credit to the fast-responsive officers, but also a credit to the staff at the high school. They had a fantastic job. That is, I do have some photos, I'm sure these have not been released yet. We are going to have a press conference on Friday. We're going to be able to release some photos and some video. If you'd like, I'm sure you'll be able to. So what we're looking at there are some screenshots of a young man attacking a pistol sovereign inside the administrative building. On the last page, it has a photo of a young man challenging police officers out front of the school and immediately taking them to custody at the school. So the motive for what we have returned to be and what we believe to be accurate is they live with some sort of foster family situation. And the mother, who they've been with for several years, was injured somewhere. And they, the kids who have some mental health issues, believe for whatever reason that either their mom is going to die. In fact, they made the comment, they shouted out the comment a few times that their mom's dead. And so we believe that, from what I understand, I'm going to show this to you here in a minute, this is kind of a fun thing. But what we believe is that they were going to get their little sister out of the middle school and run away. And that was their motive for being there, right? And I really set information to press because I really wanted to make sure that people knew that and nobody was being targeted. I think that just once they got to school, their plan- I think that just once they got to school, their plan kind of unraveled. These young men were full of rage and anger and it was a very scary situation. And we had the opportunity to watch the video of their little sister just that. It was a scary thing. And so, you know, I don't know, they all don't really know their entire motive, but we believe that is the motive. But since then, I want to report that we have had officers at the school every morning. This morning, I was actually there opening the door and opening the students to the school. Very much engaged with what's going on. The kids, the staff, and the parents, it was absolutely incredible. Fantastic group of students there at the school. And I just want, I wanted to share this. This was Officer Joey Langos yesterday at the high school, hanging out with some of the students, and he was challenged to a dance-off by one of the teachers. So there you go. You can stop the video at that point. But I just wanted to show you just how great our officers are and how great our community is. And it's just so amazing. Any questions?
We sure appreciate you. My son was in the high school when all this was going down. And when the name was released to the older student, he said, you know, there's obviously something going on in his life because he'd always been a pleasant kid. And I just, I would move that as a council, we officially vote thanks to both the school staff and the police for their timely response that was both, it kept the students safe and yet they were able to bring the young man in without using legal force. And so many places have not been able to do that. And I'm just so thankful.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Well, it's third. Actually, there is a letter in draft that we're going to announce, both the individuals involved as well as the institutions to thank them for their prompt, according to their response. So the board is prepared. Let's put it up. All right. Thanks to you.
Did we actually vote on that?
Oh, here we vote, all in favor. All opposed, same side. Motion passes unanimously. It would happen anyway, so.
Unless someone voted against it just because it didn't go far enough.
Yeah, well, that's. Mr. Isidello.
Thank you, Mayor. So public hearing this evening is just to fold up the legality of the transportation benefit district into the City of College Place. This was mentioned in previous presentations about this. But once a transportation benefit district was created, it's its own organization for many years. You basically had to operate them as two different groups, even though it was the same governmental body as city council operated. In 2015, the legislature luckily enacted this where it allows the legal organization of the transportation benefit district to be folded into the city government. This makes a lot of sense because while for this initial year, you have to file the audit, which will be relatively easy because there's no money in or out of the organization. If folding this up was not allowed to happen in future years with whatever revenue stream is decided, that would be a little more complicated than this just simplifies it.
Thank you. So I would like to open a public hearing on the City of College Place absorption of the College Place government of the Transportation Benefit District. A motion to testify for it gets be stepped forward. The city will be in order. Once again, a motion to testify for it gets the City of College Place facility to operate the Transportation Benefit District and set up a city address. And we'll find a motion to testify for it. Let's see, City of College Place is simply the Transportation Benefit District. We set up a city address. Seeing none, one. Is there a motion to place that over? Been moved by Ms. Sherman. Seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Close, same side. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Isidello.
Just to repeat, this is a full adopted transportation benefit district legal organization within the city government framework. It will simplify financials and so forth in the future.
Other questions for Mr. Isidello?
I'll motion to adopt ordinance number 17-021 to enjoy the College Place Transportation Benefit District in the City College Place and in Chapter 3, 4, 6. All the College Place municipal code is necessary. Resolve the CBTBD.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Pedersen. Seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Close, same side. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Gordon, franchise utility policy will be issued and voted adoption.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make this brief. You folks have seen this before back on May 9. This is really just our effort to standardize our franchise utility requirements across the board for all our franchises. We requested any comments anybody might have. Didn't really receive any, so we're just moving forward with what we presented on the 9th. We, your package should have the full set. What we're actually doing is repealing one of the chapters, 12.08 excavations, which had some language with three hard to write away requirements. And we're in fact replacing that with 12.06, a new chapter, write away permits, as well as Title 20, which in particular addresses requirements for our franchise utilities. And again, that new Title 20 really makes it very clear that in particular, undergrounding is required as a part of working within the city for new facilities. So that's an important part of that. We also used a lot of our experience here in the Cars Project in terms of how we want to move forward in future projects to make those a little more seamless, a little bit easier to manage. So are there any questions?
Mr. Gordon?
I would move that we approve ordinance number 17-022, rescinding Chapter 12.08 excavations and adopting Chapter 12.06 write away permits and Title 20 telecommunications and other commercial utilities.
Please say a second.
I'll say it.
Okay, moved by Ms. Selby. Seconded by Ms. Pedersen. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Close, same side. Motion passes unanimously. Back to you, Mr. Isidello, electric vehicle charging station.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Agenda Bill 17-112, electric vehicle charging station. This is an exciting partnership between Wawa University and then the Columbia REA. So to rewind, a couple months ago, we had some discussions with Pacific Power and REA about providing a vehicle charging station for your charge to the city to put somewhere within the city because where I previously worked at, visited the app for City of Colfax and Town of Rosalia. After much conversation, REA stepped up to the plate and said they would donate it to us. Keep in mind that for folks who are using it, they would have to pay a cost of electricity, but they have reeder unit will be installed on the actual electric vehicle charging station itself. The other issue was where to put the charging station because City Hall is not within REA territory. However, the gas station down the road is. And talking with the university, they were very excited about the partnership, driving foot traffic and visitors into College Avenue corridor. So they offered a lease of a dollar a year to put over by the service station. And that's really what's before you today, both the documentation from REA as well as the lease with the university.
Questions?
I guess under the heading, gift horse in the mouth. Do I understand there's different, these stations have different ambridge outputs? And this would be considered a, this gift would be considered more of a trickle charger than a rapid charge? Is that correct?
It's a trickle charge. REA is seeing if they can locate a fast charge. However, the only thing that they promised me was the trickle, but we're trying to locate the fast charge.
So in the future, that could be replaced, obviously?
In the future, but so right now, they've just committed to the trickle charge.
Thank you.
Ms. Selby?
On that, I was kind of surprised to read in the officer's manual for my electric car that quick charging too often is what destroys your battery. So, you know, if we end up with a trickle charger, we should maybe like post that information prominently.
Just my dad, battery industry is changing rapidly and almost no one can keep up with it. So it may not, it may be in the future that it may not happen.
Further questions for Ms. Pedersen?
I will make permission to authorize Mayor Carter to sign property lease agreement with Wawa University for electric vehicle charging station at 406 South College and a license and bill of sale agreement with Columbia with the Electricity Association and creation of proprietary fund number 406, electric vehicle charging station. Go ahead. I will go to stop.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman. Seconded by Ms. Ryan again. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Close, same side. unanimously. City Hall landscaping and Rosen College landscaping. Mr. Rick Gordon.
Yes, so as part of the Cars Project, we have two unsightly areas that have not been landscaped, roads and college and right here, entrance into City Hall. Presented the landscaping proposals that the plant company did last month. It was, and that seemed to be acceptable to the council. So we went out to bid and we received two proposals, one from the plant company and then the second one from Smith Brothers. Smith Brothers was the low bidder at $21,954.06, including tax. We're recommending to go with Smith Brothers, including a 10% contingency. So the total not to exceed $24,000.06. Any questions?
Ms. Selby?
Are we required to take a little bit?
I believe we are required to take a little bit. I mean, there are, you know, you reviewed the proposals. But yeah, essentially.
I would authorize the administrator contract with Smith Brothers Industries not to exceed 24,150, which includes a 10% contingency and 8.7% sales tax for landscaping installation at the City Hall entry and the roads and college avenue landscaping events.
Second. Moved by Mr. Pedersen. Seconded by Ms. Pedersen. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Selby?
So did we compensate the plant company for the work that they did in coming up with proposals that we looked at in light?
Yes, we submitted, we had a contractor.
Any further discussion?
Just for the council, so could somebody explain when you can choose a contractor without going after a public bid? And what the line is to choose?
Well, there's an amount, and I'm probably not the best person to describe this, but we reviewed their qualifications, updated the bidders. And there are amounts that were not required to go out for bid. But this, we have to go out for bid. I don't know, Paul or Sarah can add any more to that.
So there are times when you can just go out, choose somebody off that rooster that you have some contractors available.
Right, but I believe the amount is.
So what's that amount?
I think it's $5,000.
Well, this is 15.
It's not, it's not very much. So if anything, less than $5,000, you can just choose somebody?
Right. This is 15.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Close, same side. Motion passes unanimously. He's hurt. Surplus of a dump truck.
Yeah, we had an unfortunate incident at the wastewater treatment plant. Dumping a load of dirt. And we don't know exactly what happened, but we do know that the cylinder when it came up, one of the joints broke. I think that's what caused the shifting. And you see the pictures? Unfortunately, nobody was hurt. Because that can get kind of scary. But it leaves us without a dump truck at the wastewater plant. I did call the insurance. They came in and they totaled it. It was totaled. And they offered salvage value of not very much. And we don't want to deal with it. We really don't want to deal with it. And so the total that they would pay out on this vehicle is $36,857.41. So I would, I'm requesting that council authorize this surplus of this vehicle. And then my staff will be looking through our purchasing cooperatives that we are a member of to see if there's other empty dump trucks that we can find suitable.
Mr. Pedersen?
I would that we approve the surplus of the vehicle in 1998 in Renesvold Dump Truck.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pedersen. Seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Close, same side. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Back to Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. We are on the brink of moving towards a regional, or I shouldn't say a regional stormwater program so much as just an MPDS compliant program. And to start that off, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, Phase 2. Phase 1 was for the larger cities. We fall under Phase 2. Thank you for the reminder. In short, that means that we'll be looking at establishing a stormwater utility. In order to do that, we have received a grant of, I think, about $79,000. Just shy of $80,000 from Department of Ecology. We had some match involved there and some other funds. So you'll see that in addition to the full amount of 111, 511, we estimate some additional contingency in there as well because we think there may be a few extra costs. So we had five firms submit proposals. We have, let me go ahead and name them for the record. We have HDR Inc., Aspect Consulting, Herrera, EA Engineering, Science and Technology Inc., and Parametrics. And Parametrics was, we evaluate all proposals. And Parametrics was selected. My staff is the best qualified to complete the work. So we're asking for council to consider approving this contract with Parametrics as a way to initiate our effort to begin establishing stormwater utility for the city.
Question for Mr. Gordon.
Mr. Pedersen?
What was it about Parametrics that convinced you they were the better?
They had a good reputation. And a couple of our staff folks had worked with them before and were very pleased with what they'd seen in terms of professionalism and their ability to deliver. The other thing that was important here is they also agreed to meet our budget. This is a little bit of a different situation in that Ecology, you signed your agreement. This is a little bit of a different situation in that ecology, you signed your agreement with ecology based on estimates, so you have a number, and that's an estimate. And you don't even have any consultant on board yet, and they agreed to meet that estimate for the scope of work. So that was convincing there, too.
Good, thanks.
Quick question, I'm sorry, you said it, I think I was looking at something else. Total cost, $111,000, approximately was $13,000, and there was a grant of $80?
$79,000, just shy of $80,000.
And $79 was the total amount of grants that we received? Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I heard, okay, thank you.
Further questions for this place?
Well, if nobody has one, I just have one more. So, what can we see the scope of the project?
The scope is attached in your council packet, it'll kind of go through what we're asking them to do, but it includes a rate study similar, in fact, FCS will be part of that effort. I believe they have retained FCS.
Yes.
Yes, and then they also will be putting together the main points of our permit for compliance, so we can actually step into that role just as soon as we have, as soon as we can. And so our intent as staff is to get that going quickly and get people on board, and also identifying some of the capital facilities that need to be out there. We're looking right now at, just regionally looking at putting in some facilities that can serve areas of the city that are currently just empty, directly to the creek. So, that'll all be taken a look at as far as the study, and they should come back with us in some recommendations.
The state deadline for getting an analysis back to them on that, is there a deadline?
There's no deadline on an analysis, but we need to be under permit by 2019.
19.
2018 is really, that's more effectively the deadline for us.
Okay.
We need to be on board and making progress.
Have a word done, yeah, great, yeah, thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Peterson?
I've been trying to decide if this is a corporate forum or we should talk about it in the board's committee, but it's more of a comment, I just want to make sure that we talk to them about when they're here for their visits that are described in school board, that we talk to them about some of the practices of managing yard waste. And I'm specifically thinking of putting leaves in the street for collection, because I think that's something that greatly affects the quality of the stormwater coming out of our stormwater system, and I think without, without information like that, our plan is not likely to be very effective.
We'll mention that, too.
So we looked at, anybody here have a general idea of what the rate study is going to be per lot?
I was speaking with the city of Walawala, and I don't know how accurate this is, but they claim to have the highest rates in the state. I don't know how true that is, but they're about 11 bucks per residential lot, per month. So we're probably looking in that range. The difficulty is with a smaller jurisdiction is you have the overhead that you can absorb across more customers, with a city like Walawala that's a little larger, we're smaller here. And so we gotta do a lot, we don't have a lot of overhead to play with. So it'll be a challenge.
And how soon do you expect to get the results back from the study?
I would like to see them, the timeline is, we've got some time, but we're gonna try here as staff, if we get this done as soon as possible, we'd like to have something due before the end of the year, pretty quick.
Ms. Selby?
Have we talked with Walawala at all about joining into a joint utility?
No, we haven't, but we would expect that it might be something we would see as part of the recommendations if it made sense. The, I would say the only difficulty we might have would be at the political level, the same one that we see across the board. There's lots of areas where we've actually been cooperating and are not necessarily because of that. So, from a practical standpoint, it'd be kind of nice to just be able to hire somebody else who's already got pieces in place to do that, whether or not that would be something that would be amenable to both parties, we could look at that.
It should take both of us money, because we wouldn't have to duplicate the, a big chunk of the administrative services.
Actually, we could do it at the county level, too.
Yeah, the county level would probably be the best.
Is there going to be an environmental impact study associated with this?
Not to my knowledge. I don't, you can trip environmental requirements, you know, maybe I should defer to John on that, this is a plan, John's disappeared. Yes, I think he does trip some environmental review.
Typically, this would get a determination of non-significance, because the program is specifically designed to improve environmental outcomes. The only times that you would potentially, so developing the utility and putting that in place is going to be non, is not going to have a significant impact. The only times you potentially trip it is if you were, like, taking out a wetlands to replace it with a stormwater pond, or something like that, which you generally wouldn't do anyway, so.
Yeah, I understand, I was just wondering if we had some sensitive areas that it might be covering?
Yes, and I think, you know, obviously if there's a new facility that's going in and it frequently, especially if it's in the critical areas, we have to do environmental review on. And typically those things along creeks are sensitive and they're in the critical areas, so yeah, or require, when we get to the facility level.
Well, and the permit requires that in your stormwater management plan, you have different requirements for your sensitive areas that you do for the rest. So that's part of why getting the permit doesn't really trigger.
Because it's already addressed.
It's all designed to work together, so you don't have to do an environmental review on whether you should get an environmental permit. Occasionally, we do things that make sense.
It's nice to have an expert on council.
Further questions for Mr. Peterson?
I was waiting for Lauren to take it, but all the things in the operating city administrator, that's where you know it's still, right? Yeah, to execute a contract with Parametrics for professional services to complete the city's regional stormwater system plan and attached scope items for $111,511 with a $13,056 contingency for a not to exceed amount of $124,967.
Seconded. Been moved by Mr. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Peterson, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same side? Motion passes unanimously. Back to you, Mr. Gordon, for Fourth Street Academy Way.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, this is another contract, this is another one you've seen before many times. This is the Fourth Street Academy Way Final Design Contract Award. If you recall from our previous meetings, this particular contract had already gone out for some preliminary design by Anderson Perry. When we put this particular, and their contract had lapsed, it expired, so we went back out to contract for bids, and we only received, not bids, but proposals, we only received one proposal, and it was from Anderson Perry. So we didn't have a lot of selection there in terms of who we could choose from. At this point, though, they would have probably, it would have been hard to not see them as best qualified since they already worked on the project at some level. This is the project where we're looking at putting in sidewalks and overlaying both Fourth Street and Academy Way along that stretch, it is highly used by private schools as well as the university gym area. The contract itself is for about $215,909, just shy of $216,000, with a 10% contingency right in the $235,000, $237,000 range. The, we're looking, hopefully, this, if you recall from some of our previous discussions, we're looking at a variety of different ways to fund this particular project, we've got three TIB applications we're going to put out there. We have one that's already been, that we've already won, that we've already been approved for, but they have not signed it, because they've, they advised us to go ahead and reapply, and reapply for two other funds as well. I hope this, hope folks remember a little, okay, so you're aware of that. So we have that, and also, if you recall, the administrator just recently applied for CDVG money to the tune of $550,000. If we're successful with that, we may see if TIB can fund one of our other projects. So, it's, the funding itself is kind of a moving target. We currently have about $750,000 in hand, so that's a good part of it, over half, and we're hopeful that if everything is successful, and we're successful in getting more funding, we should be into construction by maybe early summer next year.
Mr. Peterson?
Do you anticipate that you may learn of something new that will require you to have a change in the scope of this project?
That's always a risk. We've learned our lesson from Cars Project, there's lots of, actually not quite as many as we perhaps anticipated, but there's always new things. What we have going for us here is we are not putting water or sewer, the only subsurface facilities that we'll be constructing will be, I believe it'll be a single stormwater infiltration basin. So, yes, we could possibly run into something, we're trying to fit it in between some of the existing utilities, but I don't think we'll have quite the level of uncertainty of some of the other projects.
Any above-ground or underground utilities getting relocated?
Yes, that's going to be an issue for, especially on the north side with the power poles along Fourth Street. Along Academy Way, for the most part, they're on the west side, I think we're okay there. That whole area, we're not going to be replacing sidewalks, they're already compliant, we have quite a few of them out there. But our strategy for, on the north side of Fourth Street, is to actually, that's give you a shared parking and bike lane, 12 foot wide, and in those areas, we can pull out the curb a little bit to get around the utilities if we have to, and preserve the parking and still leave the bike lane unfettered. So that, that's one of our strategies, we may do something different, but at that point, it looks like that'd be the least, be the easiest to move forward with.
And last question, have we worked with both the university and the academy to make sure they're on board with our plan?
Yes, we have, we worked, actually, we were not successful with one of our washout applications, sidewalk and bicycle applications, but we worked very closely with Rogers and Wamba. The university we've worked with as well, they, at this point, because of the amount of money, we're funding all of the design costs here, we don't have any, we have about $37,000 from TIB, but aside from that, that $237,000, $235,000 and a half, that's coming out of our own pockets. Because of that, we don't have a lot of leeway in terms of introducing new design elements, and so what we've talked to the university about is letting us know what they want in terms of the backside of that sidewalk, curb cuts, because they have the potential to also put in, if they want to, another set of sidewalks alongside the back. And what we've talked about is actually putting in cold joints in our sidewalks, so if they want to, they could pull out sections and put in street lights or street trees along there. So what we're doing is, at this point, looks like the best we can do is prepare for their later design if they decide to go forward with it. There is one other option that we may be able to pursue, and that is later on, when we go for funding with TIB, with those applications, we could possibly, if they're ready to jump at that point, include them in those grants. So that's an option we'll be looking at, in terms of simplifying the project, probably the easiest thing for us to do is just to move forward and leave them the option of joining us later with a second project.
Ms. Selby?
And we've been in discussions about this, but just to get on the record, I would like, if possible, for us to consider abolishing the on-street parking on at least the north side between College Avenue and Davis, because there are so many parking lots coming out of there, and you cannot see, coming out of a parking lot, you cannot see if cars are coming until you're so far out that you're actually blocking the road. And so I see almost accidents there almost daily, and I mean, obviously, there wouldn't be tallies, because everybody's going really slow, but still. And I think even, even shared parking there for bikes is gonna, it really discourages biking there, so.
Did you say College Avenue and Davis?
From College Avenue to Davis, along Fourth. No, I'm not suggesting that we change, we're talking about it right now.
Ms. Selby, would you share your, that actually comes from a very, very thorough study by your students?
Yes, this is not just something I dreamed up, although I do firmly believe in it, but my transportation engineering class worked with the city, and the city staff were amazing to work with, and they actually provided equipment so that my students could get some experience, and so now my students have provided them with traffic counts along Fourth, both the automated and some hand counts. And what I thought was a really good report, which I gave it away, on that corridor and what they thought should happen, both from the university and from the city, one of the things was to get rid of on-street parking, and we will be providing that report as well to the university master planning committee. I wanted to wait until after the faculty all had their grades in, so I would actually pay attention to it, so I'll be sending the report this week. And the city has a copy of the report as well. I'm very proud of them.
So the total cost is really designed fees of $237, so, I apologize, you've told me many times, this entire project has a price tag of?
About $1.3 million.
About what?
$1.3 million.
$1.3 million, that includes the?
That's everything, that's design, right-of-way acquisition, it's a little bit of our acquired way acquisition and the construction.
And so you're, you address whether Walawala University would be willing to fund some of this, well, you're, once again, that's, it really sounds like that would be another second phase that they might be interested in that, not the initial phase, as far as sidewalks on there, okay, so.
Yeah, the $1.3 million is the project that we're looking at, would be a five-foot sidewalk along that south side.
Right.
But, again, there's no reason they couldn't come along, and suddenly it could be a 10-foot with street trees and everything else, so.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Mr. Peterson?
I didn't get a chance to look at the attachments here before, because I couldn't get board docs to load through the horizons for a second, just to get the thing, so I'm looking at the parking, and because of our experience with the Cars Project, I'm compelled to ask, what is the parking width? But, see, because I'm looking at certain buses that are trying to fit in these parking spaces, and they're spilled out into the street and everybody's going across, so what can we expect on this project?
On this street, you won't have, the only parking you're going to have is, and I should perhaps clarify the scope, it really goes from Davis to, on Fourth Street, to Academy Way, and Academy Way after Whitman. So what we're looking at is actually, as a part of this project, contemplating the parking control to the, to the east along Fourth as well. But from Davis to Academy, the parking will be on the north, there will be parallel parking on the north side. And in that area, you'll have a 12-foot shared parking and bike lane, so it'll be a little wider. It's not, it's not the perfect scenario, generally you would like to have a striped, standalone bike lane, that you're not going to have any doors, this isn't perfect, but it does give us a shared use lane where there can be some parking on that north side for some of the residents and some of the people who use that. And then on the south side, next to the university, right now where we have that 90-degree parking coming out, there will be no parking there, there may be some curb cuts for ADA areas for the, for the university, but the plan right now is no parking along there with a five-foot bike lane. So it'll be a lot straighter, you don't have a lot of the ins and outs that you do on College Avenue. We're still looking at what that intersection there at Davis and Fourth will look like, it may not change at all. At the very least, we'd probably try and do something to enhance the pedestrian crossings.
So the answer is 12 feet, but it's a shared?
Yes.
Space with the bike lane?
Just along, just along the north side.
So the parking space is probably 10 feet and the bike lane is?
Well, parking spaces are more like seven to eight, generally it's about an eight-foot width is what we allot for, and then you have another four foot for your bikes. And a standalone bike lane is typically five feet. So, it's tight. It doesn't mean the bike cannot go into, further, a little further into the traffic lane or ride right on the line, but that's pretty much a standard width for shared use. The alternative would be to, we have two 11-foot The alternative would be to, we have two 11-foot lanes, vehicle traffic lanes. We just don't have, without buying a lot of right-of-way, we just don't have a lot of other options if we're going to try and get bikes.
And are the bike lanes directional?
Yes, you'd have one, one directional and another. And they would curve around Academy as well.
So you've got one on each side of the street?
Yep.
Thanks. And 11-foot traffic?
What's that?
And an 11-foot traffic lane?
Two 11-foot traffic lanes.
So that's really tight?
I don't think it's exceedingly tight. When you put that shared use lane there, for the most part, it's not, it's not as tight as perhaps just an 11-foot. Most of our regular roads are 11-foot lanes on our local roads. So if that helps at all, it's pretty standard.
What I've learned is what looks good on paper in theory doesn't always work when you get out there.
11-foot is a pretty standard local road width. That's not supposed to be a raceway through there. You know, hopefully, we're not going to see.
But there are buses.
Yes, there are buses, yeah.
And so the, so as I mentioned before, the buses I measured were 11 feet.
You mean...
Or 810, I'm sorry.
Mirror to mirror or...
And their mirrors were, were extra. And so that was the concern, is the viability with the width of the mirrors beyond the width of the...
The, the approach to streets is changing a little bit in terms of the philosophy. As you know, the complete streets idea with everybody being on it, traffic slowing down. The alternative for us would be to get rid of the bike lanes, which is a big part of our funding component. That's actually how we get the funding.
Is that a possibility? Is that a local decision?
What's that, to get rid of the local? If we, if we say that, we may not get the funding from TIB or from...
Well, if we find out that it's not safe.
Yeah, well, and it was in our application for the TAB too. So we have a quarter million dollars that assumes bike lanes. So the problem is if we say no to that, we may lose our funding. Because that's really what it was for, was to provide pedestrian and bicycle access as well.
Well, it's so narrow, I'm really concerned about this, because it sounds like we're getting back into the same problem we're having on College Avenue.
Yeah, we're using, we are using the same language as we normally do for a regular standard 36-foot wide road with parking on both sides and it's...
It most vary. It's a little more part of the avenue you're on. Move to discussion. It's a motion. Been moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Selby, is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. State of Washington Board for Volunteer Firefighters and Reserve Officers, please start.
I'm here tonight to present Agenda Bill 1713 about requesting the Council to approve ordinance 10023. This ordinance will allow college-based reserve officers to participate in the volunteer firefighters and reserve officers relief and pension program administered by the Department of Fire and Rescue. The yearly fee for both the disability and pension is $370 per reserve officer. The reserve officer will be required to pay $30 towards the pension future. Under this plan, the reserve officers will receive a pension at retirement based upon your service and age of retirement. And the line of due disability and death benefit or insurance would cover the reserve event of an accident or injury while they were volunteering or working in that agency. The ordinance also discusses the need for a reserve officer board that would enroll members here inside the city to relieve, provide payment for the annual fee and take care of the same and the same. College-based volunteer firefighters are already covered under the program, and we feel it would be in the best interest of the city to allow the reserve officers to participate.
Questions, please. Lisa?
I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 17-023, allowing the City of College Place Reserve Police Officers to participate in the volunteer firefighters and reserve officers relief and pension benefits.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, it's seconded by a time by Mr. Cleveland and Ms. Sherman. I'll give it to Heather. Eighty-four through discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Rosatello, TBD benefit, keep revenue options.
Hey, so I'm going to give a presentation on some various revenue options for transportation benefit district. This is very duplicative from past presentations, so I'll just go over it briefly. Again, just showing the existing conditions of some of our roadways, why, why we were looking at this revenue option. So Broadway, Birch, Fourth, Academy, we have a lot of local streets that really need care and additional revenue streams since we're getting near the end of the roads that are federally classified and you need a local match to get a lot of the state grants. So the need for these local roads is north of $18 million, and with inflation, everything else that grows. The streets, which are not a different color here, are the local streets. So to go over the revenue options, there's a couple of them. There's ones that are subject not to voter approval. One is a TAB fee, which is $20 per vehicle. Estimated revenue is just north of $120,000 for transportation impact fees. For the vehicle TAB, with both the top options on both sides, there's benefits and drawbacks. So with the vehicle TAB, the benefit is you are tying a use to the revenue. So it's folks driving vehicles to fixing the streets. The problem is it's a tax on residents, and folks passing through really aren't experiencing, contributing to the roadway network. But again, it ties into a specific use, and with estimated revenue on this would be $120,000. There's some other options. You have property TAB.
Mr. Rosatello, would you step back and talk about the transportation impact fees?
Yeah. Transportation impact fees, that would just be on commercial and industrial buildings. With reading the impact fees on that, basically, we would have to do a study to determine what the impact fee should be for all the various roadways, and then assess that on a commercial, new industrial and commercial building construction. There's some issues with disparity with that though, and research in it. And I couldn't find a city that actually pursued that, which, how you go about it became problematic because no one did. There's a couple other options. Property taxes, one-year excess levy for capital purposes. That'd just be a property tax. There's one entity that looked at doing it, but then never pursued it. That was the City of Auburn. The other common option is the 0.2% sales and use tax. Our neighbors in the region have pursued this, Walla Walla and Waitsburg. The estimated revenue on this year-to-year would be around $271,000, so more than the tabs. But, but there are some drawbacks to it, because since that would be a sales and use tax, as far as our economic development edge against Walla Walla and other areas, that would lessen that. And then also, in addition, with some other sales and use tax propositions coming up in the foreseeable future, and with us being close to the Oregon border, it becomes a challenge. So both of the top options that the cities have pursued, they both have benefits and drawbacks. The annual vehicle fee, that would be vehicle tabs, but above $20. And then it becomes where voters would need to approve it, or vehicle tolls. And with the exception of the state putting tolls on the flow within Bridge and Seattle, no local transportation benefit districts have pursued this toll option. There is a border crossing option, but we aren't by Canadian border. And there's a TBD up north that has that, but that's wouldn't apply here.
We can't apply to Oregon?
So vehicles subject to fees, so most are passenger vehicles, motorcycles, trucks weighing 6,000 pounds or less, tow trucks, taxi cab, for hire vehicles, private use trailers over 2,000 pounds, motorcycle trailers, travel trailers, fixed load vehicles, 6,000 pounds or less, or mobile homes licensed as vehicles, exempt vehicles, our farm vehicles, campers, off-road vehicles, snowmobiles, mopeds, personally used trailers with single-axle, commercial trailer, combination trailer, horseless carriage, converter gear, government vehicles, private school vehicles, and then vehicles registered to disabled American veterans. So really, we come...
Lisa, do you have a question?
Can I, can I ask you a question there? One thing that puzzled me is I didn't see vehicles with collector's plates on either list, and since collector's plates don't have to renew their tabs every year, I wondered where they fell.
I would have to look up that action.
Yeah, that would be helpful, thank you, for those of us who have vehicles with collector's plates. I have one. It's really my son's, but till he's 18, it's mine.
So, so really, we come before the council this evening just to find out which option would you want us to further explore? And the various options are all listed here. So, so these are all various options, so I'm here to entertain any questions or direction on which one to dig into further.
Mike, I think I, I think I made a comment last time, there was another, well, another, there's a, there's a board I'm on, and there's a county commissioner, he's from a different county than Walla Walla County, and they had gone through this. And his, his one, his one point was that the $20 fee really was something that aggravated the citizens. And it's something that shows up immediate. And they had tried both ways, and they'd actually gone with the sales tax. And I appreciate, and I understand your, your concern and the arguments about in the future, maybe increases in our, or... But he talked, he spoke, the county commissioner spoke about the night and day impact, and how the citizens reacted to that, being a sales tax versus an additional amount. So, you know, I saw, it's just something for discussion, obviously, but I think that's immediate. When you know that your tab is 46, now they've gone to 66 or something like that, that's a... And I like your argument also about the passing through individuals, perhaps also, that are sharing the costs of the roads, not just the citizens that are living there, something like, with a sales tax, so. Anyway, just, just, it was an opinion that I had heard from somebody that had already gone through this process here in eastern Washington, so. Anyway, thanks, Mike.
Lisa?
Is there any ability on the vehicle license fee to have, again, discounts not applied to people who are low income or fixed income? Because it really strikes me that somebody that's just barely hanging on, 20 bucks extra to renew their tabs is going to be a big hit.
I have looked up that action, and there is some recent legislation within the last two years that does allow that. That would have to be in the A1 ordinance, should the TAB route be explored.
I, I share Councilman Peterson's, Peterson, Warren's concerns. I can't read your names like.
Out of curiosity, you know, $20 is kind of a big jump for sure. 2%, or 0.2% increase on sales taxes, you know, noticeable, I suppose. Is there a way you could do a combination? Could you do like a $10 vehicle license fee and maybe a minimal increase on the sales tax? So that we're not hitting anyone necessarily too hard here. I don't know if that's a good idea or not, but it just occurs to me, like, can we get a little bit of both worlds here? Something that's a reasonable increase that puts a little bit of use, puts a little bit extra for the vehicles that are local that are using it, but also a little something for sales.
I would have to look that up. There's no organization that has a transportation benefit district I'm aware of that's done both. I am aware of one that has switched from a TAB to a sales tax, that's City of Clarkston. But I'm not aware of one that has both. I'd have to research that.
So we could be the pioneering first. Mr. Bob?
If it's an interest, if it's a... Just to comment here, I've had several individuals, when the city approached me, with concerns about a vehicle license fee. So that's just a, a grant, just to share with you.
I agree, I agree with Jerry and the rest of them. That's a non-starter here in the city. Your best bet is if you really want to do this, to put it in a sales tax, because when you break in a sales tax, you get all the areas that it's funding. Who really knows that it's funding all those areas, you know, who really complains? But you will get complaints, massive complaints, you do a little TAB.
Is it possible to look up, I see, what the TAB fees were in the darkies when I first got my driver's license? They were, I remember them being really high, like before they cut all that off. Is it possible to have like a range of what people used to be paying? Because it feels like to me, we're just kind of almost getting back up to where we were.
Not even before.
No, that's what I, that's what I thought. I thought it was really, really ridiculous. So I'm, it feels like mortgage interest rates, where everyone used to pay like 16%, and now people are freaking out over 4.8%. But, I mean, I still have my concerns. I started with my concern earlier that, you know, I like the sales tax option because it actually involves the people that are shopping and using the city. But then I understand the concerns are, are pretty weighty as well. So I think it'd be really interesting to see where we were with tabs, because I think that's really good information. Because comparatively, we're still leads ahead of where we were.
Excuse me, at one point when we talked about this, we talked about putting together a list of the different fees that we've raised in the last couple of years and who they would apply to. And I, I still think that would be really helpful, because I, I remember most of them, I think, but it's just kind of feels like, for very good reasons, we've raised a lot of fees, and we're going to be looking at our wastewater fees. I would be shocked if they said, "You should pay less." Pretty sure it won't. So I think that would be really helpful to look at, to see, you know, are there certain parts of our constituents that are being targeted more than others in some of the increases? Now, I know some of them are, we've done things like the lodging tax, which is, you know, the avatars and the...
There's those there.
You know, so, but that would help me a lot in figuring out what direction we really should go with this.
Is this list you're giving us up here the limit? Are there some tax options that we're not being made aware of?
As far as the transportation benefit district, this list here is everything with the exception that the vehicle license tab fee, you can go for a higher amount through voter approval, so that's the only variation.
Okay, you don't have the ability to use a percentage of a utility tax?
No, not through this option. It's sales and use.
So this, the establishment of this district is to improve the roads?
Yeah.
Okay, and I just want to remind the council, let's not forget that we used to dedicate 50% of the utility tax, I think it was the utility tax, to the roads. I think. Is that right?
That was 45%.
Yeah, and so there's more than one way to fix the roads.
Another question, local improvement districts.
Yeah.
Do we have to do anything to make it so that a group of homeowners could band together and say, "We want to be a local improvement district so we can put in sidewalks or fix our road or whatever?"
Well, it's voter approved and basically they would have to petition us. There's, I'd have to look up the percentage threshold on that.
Because one of the things that I've been encouraging our engineers without borders for, to look at for local projects is working with our local community on ways to fund, you know, ways to get the infrastructure that we need. So if a group did come up with that, then all I have to do is petition. We don't have to do anything right now to make it so they can petition?
No.
Okay. Because I like that idea personally, but I don't know if there's enough people that live close enough together that like that idea to-
The LID.
What? LID?
LID.
Yeah.
Don't you have to get everybody in agreement up and down the street?
You have to get a certain percentage of the property owners inside the district and it's a pretty high percentage, but I don't remember off topic.
I think it's 60%.
Yeah. Is that all?
Then is that all?
Depending on what street, it might be successful and it might not. Probably a long shot.
Actually, I do have one more question, sorry. You have bonds up there?
Yeah.
And I know when we were talking about the waste, or the water raids, excuse me, that one of the issues was that we were getting near our debt limits. Does making this board and bringing it in, does that change our debt limits at all or are we still close to our debt limits?
In reason that it does affect our debt limit or does increase a little bit, to what level, I would have to get back to you on.
And it probably depends on, do we have a revenue source, which we don't right now?
Yeah.
How much revenue are you looking to raise per year for the district?
I mean, really, the hopes of it was somewhere within the 100,000 level so that way we could start sustainably, proactively with one down the streets.
So you kind of look at what a 2% or 0.02%, whatever it is, sales tax increase would do?
Yeah.
Was it 271?
That was about 272. About 272,000.
Okay, so you might be able to do 1% and get more than what you're expecting. Or even 0.05. No, 0.005. Is that right? Do you need anything else, Mike?
So in addition to finding the answers to the various options, what I'm hearing is maybe the two various options to just look into a little more is the sales and use tax and then the local improvement district options.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Rural Community Development Wayfinding.
Okay. This is just more of a for your information thing, so we're partnering with the Rural Community Design Initiative out of Washington State University to help us in developing the design regulations and assist in some wayfinding possibilities for College Avenue Corridor. So attached is a very early draft document, it's really to list a menu of possibilities for new development on College Avenue. We've had a couple of open houses in the past couple of months, there'll be another meeting coming up. They're still working on finessing additional information within that. I just thought it was important you're aware of it and if you have any feedback, please let us know so they can look at that.
Questions? Who's in the right order? Good evening. We gave you all the hot button topics to begin with, so I wore you down so that I'm not up here very long. Fireworks. The ward and chap in front of you addresses really three key things for the fire department that are positives. One, it gives the mayor the ability to, if there is intense weather or a other defensible reason to ban fireworks, it gives him that ability to do that. Where in the past ordinance had a big period of a hot summer day, he was able to ban fireworks. The second thing is, in the past ordinance, we did not have anything to talk about these sky lanterns and banning those, which are quite problematic because once they leave you, you are not in control of where they may go, where they may land, what they went into, the flammable liquid to tip out of it, the first in flames, all those types of things. And the third thing that we are proposing is the limiting of sales. Currently, sales start the 1st of July and go till noon on the 5th. In the new proposed, they would go from the 1st of July until the 4th of July and exclude the 5th. That is our recommendation, shorten that up just a little bit, clean it up a little bit for us. And that's why we're bringing it before you. I know there's probably some discussion on option A and wanting to ban those, but that would not be the recommendation from the fire department, just to make some questions.
So what is it that our neighbors restrict, it says, and yet they restrict what can be sold or used within their community?
So City of Wall Wall does safe and sane fireworks, so it can't be any fireworks that goes above six feet in the air and can't make any noise. I don't know if you've driven through their community on 4th of July, but they come to College Place, they go option to the county, they go wherever they do and they buy things that go above six feet and shoot into the sky and they kill us. So they have not been successful in controlling that, the safe and sane. It's hardly in place. In fact, all of the fireworks stands that you see around are in the county or in the City of College Place, they aren't in the City of Wall Wall. Because they, no one goes to them because they couldn't buy what they want to shoot.
Two quick questions. You said that your position is not outright banning at this point?
That is correct.
And why is that?
So you can do a lot of internet research and you can find people that will argue the point of either side of the argument. A study in the City of Spokane, they looked at all fireworks related injuries and deaths that they had and the eight serious injury death incidences that they had in their history were all done by illegal fireworks. None of those were done by fireworks they bought from the stand. And when the City of Spokane banned them, the entire county banned them, so it was much easier to enforce. Here, it would be an enforcement nightmare because City of Wall Wall has one level, we would have a ban, the county doesn't have any ban at all. And what has happened in places where you restrict or you ban those fireworks is you or your neighbor wants to have a show anyways, but I don't want to get caught, so I don't do it out in the street which is paved and clean. I do it in my backyard where I have grasses and I have a park provided and all those types of things that catch fire and then when they do catch fire, I run because I don't want to take it. Instead of staying there and putting it out, if you look at the report I gave you, over the last 17 years, we're averaging about one and a half responses a year, which is really small when you think about it. I mean, if you've been here and experienced the war zone, that is really quite small. And in that, I would say 85% they are out before we get there. Well, that's fantastic. So that's why we would say-
Bill, thank you.
Do it in a good spot.
Thank you, it seems rational. The second point, it seems to me that there were discussions quite some time ago that the mayor had been authorized to ban fireworks in the case of severe drought or high winds. Are you thinking that maybe was a discussion or was I implemented?
I think it was a discussion, I don't remember it being in the last ordinance because I do remember two years ago, in 2015, when the entire state was on fire, we put out PSAs to please, "Don't do it," but we didn't ban it. And I would think instead of going into that effort of going, you know, saying, "Hey, it'd be really nice if you didn't," and the community fully embraced that and it was a very minor night, I think we would have banned it because it was 109 degrees and just vehicles.
Yeah, that was my first meeting and I thought that we signed a thing that was supposed to go into effect for last year.
We had to be one year.
So it's 2015 we signed, I thought that we approved the thing that went in this year. Maybe we didn't, I don't know. But yeah, I feel like we talk about it every year.
You know what, it's a great idea.
Yeah, good point.
Great information from you too, so thank you.
I, if in favor of option B, with the, I'm a little concerned that, are there some other holidays that it might be nice to allow fireworks during? Do we have significant populations that we want to celebrate other events? I know, I don't know that we have a big contingent that wants to celebrate Chinese New Year. I know there are some people who get together every year and celebrate Guy Fawkes Day and I have not asked how they do it. Don't know if fireworks are allowed or not. And so I'm just kind of wondering if we can reach out to some of our other communities that, you know, are there times when like a normal celebration would include fireworks that we should put in our code since we want to be a welcoming city? Because it strikes me that a lot of cultures have their big fireworks day in the winter, which has always made much more sense to me than the middle of July.
So I believe there's probably a very strong population in our community that like fireworks off every day.
There is.
They live in dormitories.
And in my house.
And they may not be the population we want here, because that's safe and sane and smart, may have not kicked in.
And I completely agree with that, but I'm thinking of like our Latino community and our Russian community. And I really don't know what their cultural holidays that involve fireworks, if they have any are or when they are. But that would be something that I think it would be really nice if we could reach out to some of those communities and say-
For like a future iteration of this.
Yeah, so like it could be 4th of July, New Years and, you know, Mexican Independence Day is like in October sometime, I think. And I don't know if they do fireworks or not, so.
Mad world.
I don't know that these exist, but it seems really one culture centric to me.
One thought that occurs to me here as you're saying is, is I wonder if it'd be a good idea to offer a fireworks permit on a special day, you apply for a permit to City College Place saying, "I would like to shoot off this many fireworks for this purpose," and it could be like approved by say the mayor or something.
And we do that kind of thing.
Oh, okay.
If you don't, if you're not in that time period, like if you have a wedding or something like that and you want to shoot off fireworks, you have to go out and inspect and make sure you're not-
Well, since I cover that pretty well then, it just didn't need to be more advertised.
Yeah, college did it.
Or for people with pets, less advertised.
Right.
I realize it's a council decision, but I'm curious, you know, just from your recommendation, you know, why you're not interested in a restricted kind of ordinance like Wall Wall has. I think they're really onto something and I think it would do as well to look into the reason behind it, behind what went into their policy.
So from the fire department standpoint, there's no way, we don't enforce the law in those regards. I'm sure the police chief would love to comment on the enforcement ability of that. From what I've witnessed, completely ignore it completely and there's no way to enforce it. Once again, I'm not law enforcement, I don't respect-
But if it involves not being able to sell-
But they can go to the county. Unless you did it councilwide and we weren't 11 miles from Oregon and 30 miles from the Indian Reservation where you can get orders straight away.
I just kind of feel bad that we've become a refuge for people that enjoy nuisances to other people. And that's really the way that the majority of the people that I know in this town view it.
Yeah, the enforcement perks not given.
I don't know if my natural constituency is the annoying people or what, but I do know, I do know that there are a couple of organizations that I highly support that
get a big part of their annual operating budget from the fireworks sales. So I like to think of them as well as the fireworks. And I have observed as well that, I've lived several places where we had a ban, but around us there wasn't. And I think the dangers of trying, I think people are going to do the fireworks on 4th of July and New Year's Eve. And when they're banned, what you get is one of two things. You get people hiding to do them where they're more likely to start fires, or you get them deciding, "Well, I'll just fire off my gun instead." And both of those have not worked out really well.
And usually, illegal activities and alcohol go together. Wall Wall had homemade cannon incident, you know, about a certain time, it wasn't making a big enough boom, so it kept packing more and packing more until the cannon blew up. They would still do that, I think you can do a lot.
Well, just a reminder here, just a few years ago, we finally raised our license, our application fee for the people who sell fireworks. I mean, we let it go for years and years and years and we finally thought, "Well, maybe it could be a revenue source for us."
And in the state of Washington, the fireworks lobbyists are very good and the maximum you can charge is $100.
But I don't think it's very much they have to pay now. What is it?
It's $100.
$100?
Per vendor? They, per booth and we're limited by how many booths can be in town and there's quite a few restrictions. So my understanding maybe from the majority is option B is what we like drafted in the first, and we will present that next time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Picard, sign.
Okay. Bear with me, we may talk a lot. So when working with the planning commission over the last three, four months on sign regulations, did two workshops with them that were open to the public and we held a hearing last month and they recommended that the council adopt the regulations that you have for you, not asking you to take action tonight, but wanted to just kind of go over some of the highlights. The purpose is to, you know, protect the public health and welfare and safety by regulating existing and proposed outdoor signage of all types. Where the intent is to create a more attractive community, to prevent, you know, blight, things that are unattractive and provide a more enjoyable and pleasing community. It's also intended to, you know, not, to limit distractions so that you don't have drivers that are looking at some- that are looking at some really flashy sign when they run over somebody. Historically, we haven't regulated signs beyond requiring a building permit. So whether it's hanging on a building or it's a pole sign, they're required to get a building permit for that. And then the, the height of the signs were limited, so a pole sign would be limited to the height of the zone it's located in. That was pretty much the extent of it. We haven't really had many issues in town, so there's not really a driving like red flag saying we need to implement a sign code. Other than to, we now have this new College Avenue corridor. And so we want to make sure that we're going to protect the investment that the community's made with beautiful street trees and the streetlights. And also we're likely to see more increased activity with sandwich board signs since we have wider sidewalks now. So we have some regulations in there that will deal with that. I'm not going to go through all of these goals and policies unless you really want me to, other than, let's see, which one is it? The policy LU 14A specifically mentioned development of a sign code that was reasonable. We have increased pedestrian traffic along College Avenue through the section that we're likely to see that through the nice white sidewalks, so we want to preserve that. We went through an environmental review process, filled out a checklist and it was determined that there's, we issued a determination of non-significance. We notified the public that there was this pending ordinance and held a public hearing on that. We notified, I believe it was a hundred and ten property, property owners that would be directly affected by it. So all of the property owners along College Avenue in the downtown mixed-use district and all of the property owners in the commercial, down commercial zones were notified. At the public hearing, had four people in attendance. Two of them were the Wolves who live east end of town by Pemberton Place and they have a commercial piece of property. And then Dave Gordon with Andy's was here and he had, he had some questions, but didn't seem to be put off by it. And then there was another gentleman here who is, I think, the president of Gospel Outreach and they just put up an electronic reward sign, so he wanted to see how that worked out with what they were putting up there. So just kind of run through the code itself. Home occupations, so this is in the speaking to residential zones. So if you have home occupation, our current home occupation ordinance does not allow you to put up a sign advertising your business. Of course, your vehicle could have a sign on it, that sort of thing. So we're continuing that through this ordinance. We're addressing personal decoration signs, you know, there might be a collector of the old gas station signs or things of that nature. Somebody might want to have up hanging on the side of their garage. Those sort of things are allowed. We would allow it not to exceed thirty square feet and then no single sign may be larger than twelve square feet. To address temporary events like garage sales, yard sale signs, those things are allowed as long as they're removed within two hours of conclusion of the event. The reason for this is, we've all seen it, the yard sale sign that, you know, was from three months ago and it's laying in the ditch somewhere. People need to be responsible for removing those signs that they put out there. We will continue to enforce, which is in our nuisance ordinance, where you're not allowed to advertise like your yard sale signs on, on our brand new beautiful streetlights and things like that. Wall signs, now we're moving into kind of the business and commercial. So wall signs, they're, will not be allowed to exceed twenty-five percent of the building's surface area. So this takes from the street, the grade level all the way up to the eve of the building includes windows and doors. So that square footage, you can cover up to twenty-five percent of that with a sign. That seems reasonable. If you take a look at down at like Meadowbrook Plaza, most of the signage that's above each one of those stores, it's about twenty-five percent. Some, some are smaller, but I don't believe any of them exceed that. So we would apply that across the board on College Avenue and in the commercial, the general commercial zones. So I think that, move on to the next section. Pole signs, there'll be a distinction between the downtown mixed-use and the general commercial where in the, the downtown mixed-use, you'll be allowed to have up to sixty square feet for a pole sign. So that's like a six foot diameter circle on one side. So, you know, you take both sides. And then in the general commercial, you'd be allowed to have up to two hundred square feet and fifty feet above grade. And so in the, in the DMU zone, it's a maximum of, I think it said twenty, twenty-five feet, twenty feet. The business and commercial, continuing. Sidewalk signs, sandwich board signs, seems like I have a lot of stuff on there, but they are kind of a, primarily a pedestrian tripping hazard. So we're limiting the size on College Avenue to would be a six square feet, so two by three. In the general commercial zone, since you're generally having a little bit higher traffic, might be a little bit larger sign and there's not as much pedestrian traffic, we'll allow them to go up to twelve square feet per side. We've dealt with particularly down there at Meadowbrook Plaza where the signs, there are sandwich board signs that they have for their soda displays, they're not constructed very well, so we want to make sure that sandwich board signs are of an all-weather material. What they have down there is basically a piece of OSB and then there's probably about six to seven different layers of, from various sails that they have that are zip tied to those. And occasionally, windstorm will come along and it'll blow off one of those panels and it'll end up in a ditch. So they're just not very well constructed. The other thing is that A-frame design is preferred, and I'll show you an example later where you'll have a sign, so A-frame like that, has two feet on each side. But the, the other signs that you'll see is, they'll have these metal feet that are resting on the ground and then the sign itself is often on like a spring or something. Well, those feet, the way they stick out, end up being a tripping hazard. So we'll restrict that. We'll have a clear space to make sure that we have plenty of pedestrian room, six feet is what we're recommending. One per business on College Avenue and then one on bigger properties like Walmart, the bigger commercial property, that's one per one hundred millennial feet. So that's, that's reasonable with what the type of signage they're using right now. But if you're on a corner lot on College Avenue, you could have two sandwich board signs. Oh, also, I'd like to point out that they will have to provide proof of liability insurance. Our current rate, what we do is one million per occurrence and two million aggregate. And then a whole harmless agreement because if they are within our right-of-way, therefore we could be party to the sort of lawsuit that might take place if somebody trips and hurts himself.
Just clarification, that only applies to sign poles that are on city right-of-way, depending if it's on private, on private property. They're not required to have the-
No, it's going to be, it's going to be a requirement for sandwich board signs. So even if, so take for instance, the community stores down here, we've got a ten-foot wide sidewalk and they've got another five or so feet. That sign, their signs primarily are on the private property, but we don't, they're, they're mobile. So the sign could be permitted to be on private property but end up getting put out in the right-of-way. So it's going to be a requirement for having a sandwich board sign on your property or within the right-of-way to protect us. And, you know, the other thing is that I didn't mention is that they'll have to remove them when the business is closed because there are nuisance in that kids will put them out in the street, you know, whatever. Uh, let's see. Banners, we have some properties that are utilizing banners as their primary permanent signage. The Fiesta Tapatia has been pointed out on a number of occasions as not very attractive, just because it's so, there's so much advertising on their building. So banners will be restricted, they'll be limited to the size, the twenty-five percent. Light emitting signs, LED signs, they're, they'll be allowed on College Avenue and in the general commercial zones. If they're going to be located, so the Gospel Outreach is a light industrial zone, that's allowed there, but they are within a hundred feet of residential. So what we're proposing is that any, if you're within a hundred feet of residential, that you have to turn the signs off from six, from basically six AM to eleven PM. So at least, you know, the neighborhoods, yes.
Do you mean eleven PM to six AM?
Yes.
Okay.
Between the hours of six AM and eleven PM, they will be off.
No, no.
That's what I wrote there, but it's wrong. But in the ordinance, we'll make sure it's right. No more than one LED sign per property and then there's some size limitations as well. And that's primarily, we don't want, the proposed, the planning commission didn't want to have like on, along highway corridor where, I mean, you've all seen them like probably Portland, Seattle area where they have these massive LED signs. And it, we're just, we don't want to go that direction. Non-conforming signs, so this deals with existing signage that may encroach into our right-of-way, may exceed a certain height. And so they will be allowed to be maintained, you can repair them, paint them, if the businesses change, you can replace the panels, those sort of things. They won't be allowed to be increased in height. However, if there is some sort of accident and the sign is destroyed, they would have to comply to the regulations.
So there's no grandfathering in or-
Well, this is in effect a grandfathering in and that, and that's how we treat all grandfathering, whether it's a house or-
So can you think of any existing signs that were in violation of this-
Yeah, I'll, I'll show them to you at the end of the slide.
That they're going to have to, they're going to be forced to change?
No, not forced to change. So the Dairy Express sign, it hangs out into our right-of-way, fine, we're not going to make them change it.
How about this one down here on the corner of College and Ninth, is it?
College and Ninth.
Yeah. Used to be the cement place there.
Oh, yeah, so the auto barn, I think, was there?
Yeah, yeah.
And so that, that's an, the way that is, is described in the ordinance is an off, could be considered an off-prevention sign if the business had moved, but their sign still stayed up on that location. I don't think it's encroaching into the right-of-way.
No, it's that one private.
Yeah. It's just-
Is it the height?
No, I don't think that one exceeds the height. But I have got some examples, we'll run to them, that one shows up.
Okay, thanks.
Prohibited signs, obviously we don't want anything that's obscene. You have to be a little careful of that because there's freedom of speech and that kind of stuff, but we're not doing anything crazy. We don't want anything to have movements on them. Signs that are designed, yeah. So pendants, ribbons, streamers, this is a long paragraph, but it, it deals with things that move. And we, we, they would be prohibited. Now, that wouldn't say that a business couldn't utilize, for instance, the duck that goes around town. That, that would be categorized as something that special event moves around, it's a, you know, a cause that's out there. So you could still do things like that, but you'll see tax season, you know, you'll have the, the waving tax, whether it's the Statue of Liberty or something like that, I mean, just obnoxious stuff like that. You know, you could still do those sort of things during certain times, but we want to prohibit that. There are some temporary signs that may be displayed, so like construction signs, grand opening signs, real estate signs, special events, one week prior to and following. So that's how you could use some of those prohibited signs. Garage and yard sale signs within two hours of end of the sale, they need to be removed, that sort of stuff. Election signs, that can be a problem. We don't allow them in the right-of-way, but we have to be careful about not having a requirement that says you have to remove them within twenty-four hours of the election being completed. Ten days seems to be a pretty standardized allowance for-
There's a state regulation that overrides that.
Um-
I think it's a week.
Maybe we need to look into that a little closer.
There's big ones.
I thought ten days, from what I looked at on MSRC, I thought it was reasonable, but-
Could be ten days. But, but we have, we have authority not to allow them in our right-of-ways.
I'm sorry, what?
We do have authority not to allow them-
Right, correct.
-pole signs in our right-of-ways.
And, and we generally adhere to that. You know, I'm sure there's some-
Do we have an adopted policy for that?
I don't think we have, I think, I don't think we have an adopted policy.
What do you mean that we allow?
I'm saying generally we don't allow them to be in our right-of-way, but I don't think we have an adopted policy.
Oh.
So prohibited signs, anything that may cause a safety hazard, maybe blowing away, erected in such a position that completely covers another sign, so you don't want competing businesses to, I'm going to build a bigger sign so your sign can't be seen, that sort of thing. And then billboards. Now, we do have two billboards that are on the edge of our community up on Rose Street and we don't have any way to regulate those, so.
Say that again, don't have a way to what?
We do not have a way to regulate them because they're on the edge of our community, they look into us. So here's just, these are some pictures I've collected over the years. The date here is October, when I took the picture, and the yard sale was in August. It had been off that long. This is one of the Walmart's panels that's blown off. This is use of our right-of-way down, and they had signs strapped to trees and there's a campaign sign in the right-of-way, both of those are. This is good use of sandwich board signs where they, they've got it on the grass, they're not blocking the pedestrian right-of-way. The real estate community, we brought this up to them a couple of years ago, we had, because we had a lady that tripped. And they were very responsive, they took it right to their real estate commission and More Walmart, so this is a bigger sandwich board sign, but it's not very attractive in the way it's constructed, sits out there all year round. So you can see the signage, you know, this is more Easts and they have a big, you know, frontage here and their sign's reasonable. All of the signage along here is very reasonable. Andy's, this sign's a little bit taller than twenty feet. And if you project it, this is the right-of-way line where the asphalt meets the concrete. It does encroach a little bit. So, you know, in the event that somehow that sign was knocked down, the new one that went up would have to be placed so that- So, you know, in the event that somehow that sign was knocked down, the new one that went up would have to be placed so that it didn't project into our right-of-way. Same thing with this, this shingle sign here, it's hanging into, into our right-of-way a little bit. Not by much, but... And the original proposal was that we would allow some encroachments like signs like this to go within the right-of-way, but we do have some city engineer, engineers on the planning commission that recommended not allowing any encroachments within the right-of-way because of the conflicts that you have when you have to work with utilities and repairs. This is the Autobahn, it's, I don't think it exceeds 20 feet, but it's an example of a business that's no longer there, and I don't have any way to have it removed. Another example is Pineapple Pete's, that used to be on College Avenue. Well, walk by there, they have a little sign that says Pineapple Pete's in Walla Walla. Well, I can't, you know, I don't have any way to tell them to take that sign, we're advertising a Walla Walla business now. So we would, we would be able to address that. This is that sandwich board style sign that's a tripping hazard, you see the metal feet that stick out. It's on private property right now, but like I said, it could be easily moved within the right-of-way. Seems to be frozen. I don't believe that this, the convenience store here is exceeding their signage right now, but you, you will, generally with convenience stores, you will start to see the creep where it started out with, you know, a couple of signs in the windows, to now this entire window is pretty much frosted over with signage as is here. And so we just want to make sure that we're not flooding our environment with a bunch of advertising to make it pleasing. I don't know why this is sticking, but... Dairy Express, this pole sign, the pole itself is in, is on private property, I believe, but the sign is hanging into the right-of-way and exceeding 20 feet.
Could be just as effective if it was hanging the other way, wouldn't it?
Probably. Now, in this case, I think we acquired right-of-way at some point, either from Cars Project or when they did the remodel there, so... But, you know, it's not a problem, you know, there's obviously plenty of clearance. But if, you know, if their gas delivery truck somehow took it out and was doing turning movement in there, they'd have to move it when they rebuild. Unco, it's slightly encroaching, I think the height is about right, it might be a foot or so taller. Air Dreamers, the right-of-way line is right here, hanging into the right-of-way. It's a little low, too, it might be some clearance issues for height. Rogers Bakery looks, looks good. City Hall. This was a, a sign that I picked up this spring that was at Highway 125 in Meadowbrook. You know, this is an off-premise sign, basically, directing people down to the state line to do their shopping. And this is probably our, our biggest offender. And primarily, my biggest concern are these, these flags. And so the code restricts these sort of things outside of special events. So, right here, if you're heading down, is that, is that Blavat? Yes. This, this flag, if the wind's blowing the right way, it locks a stop sign. You got another sandwich board sized sort of sign here that could blow easily into the sidewalk. And then you get up here to the railroad crossing, this is all city right-of-way, can't see the signals here with those flags. You got little aliens in here, and so, and then the, the amount of signage that they have on the building is, is probably exceeding that 25%. We would work with them on this, a lot of, most of the signage that they have up there, their, their banners, they're, they're temporary in nature, you know, they're, they're designed to last a year or two. So we would work with them to get that within compliance.
I'm sure you're aware of what happens when you overregulate signage. A few years ago, there was a...
Yep.
There was a fellow in Utah who was still taking down the signs and finally remodeled the gable of his house and put brick up there. Embedded the picture of a hand towards the city, sending a signal to the city. And it was just part of the building code, you know?
Yeah.
Doesn't make you do that.
Yeah, no, I mean, and then there was the, the Walla Walla and the octopus fiasco, you know, was it signage, was it art, was it...
Yeah, that's right.
I, I think, I think it's reasonable, I mean, we didn't hear from any, we didn't hear any negatives stating that we were being overreaching or have gone too far, so...
So?
One of my concerns is making sure, I would prefer that we don't end up looking like a cookie cutter city where everybody has to look the same. And so looking through the proposed ordinance and requirements, it does not look like that that's the goal. I mean, I didn't see like mandatory fonts or anything like that, so I just wanted to check that that, both in the signage and in the wayfinding thing, that, they were showing pictures of places like Love and Work and stuff where they have very, very strict, everything has to look like. And I just wanted to register my opinion that that's not what we want.
No, that's not what we want. And we, you have to be really careful about when you, when you get into regulating signage, you know, and we don't want to get to that level. I don't want to regulate even content. And so, you know, the vulgar and obscene portion of it is very open to interpretation if you, if you... If you have to read the sign to, to interpret it and to regulate it, then you could be into constitutional issues there, so freedom of speech, so, no. The wayfinding stuff is more, I think we're, you know, we have some specific signage that we want to direct people in certain directions, but it's, it's not, yeah.
I can think of one sign that was impacted due to the Cars Project, will they be allowed, but their sign back up as high as it was on Ford?
No, and I, I've talked to the owners of Bee Lines, who you're referring to, and they still have the sign, although the city purchased the sign from them, in addition to purchasing right-of-way from them. And Dan Ward, we've talked, and he, he thought he would be vested, and I explained to him that if you came in and applied for the effective date of this ordinance, you would be vested, and you could go up to whatever height it was. And he's been doing some research and looking, and I've met with him once and talked to him a couple of times on the phone.
So they, they understand the deadline?
They're, they're, they're in design, he may apply before this would take effect. There is still some time, but, you know, but he, he understands what's going on, so...
Good evening again. We'll find on your computer, Council Fact, I'm not sure what we call it now anymore, a report from Washington Surveying and Rating Bureau, which in Washington State is like ISO in all other states, which is the insurance surveying organization, I believe. Which is how insurance companies get how they should charge residences and businesses within the community what they charge. And so every five years, this organization comes to our community and rates the city, rates the fire department. If you were looking at your report on, I believe it could be the second page past the title page, there's a really nice pie graph that says, these are the things that we look at in the community in a large scale for categories. And you'll notice that 40% is the fire department, another 16% is fire safety, and then 35% is water supply and 9% communication. The 9% communication is our dispatch center, I have no say over that whatsoever, other than they take my money and they apply it to dispatching wages and dispatching the staff and all that kind of stuff. The water supply system is, has to, with the public works department. The other two categories is within the fire department, and that is, is the part that they really come in and investigate. The next graph on the next page shows you how the fire departments in our state rate in those categories. And it is a scale of 1 to 10, 10 being the worst, 1 being the best, and you can say currently in the state of Washington, there are zero ones. So there are no the best of the best fire departments out there. In this rating, we went from almost a 6 to a 4. We had been a 5 since 1989, and we've reported on that prior. We are now in the top 24% of the state as far as fire departments being rated. So October 1st, if I was a homeowner or a business owner, I would let my insurance company know that our rating got better and see if, if you got a better rate on your homeowner's insurance or business insurance. If you then look two pages farther, you will see in, in those four categories, how we scored overall and how we got that 4. And you will see that the only way we got a 4 is because our water system was rated as a 2. The fire department, you will notice, is rated as a 6. So if I was a student in school, I got 40% is my grade to get a 6. That's a fail. And the reason we are a 6 in those categories is we don't have enough staffing. Our equipment is getting older. Those are the big categories of why we get that 6 in that category where we were a 5. Even though we have a new fire engine, our other engine is now older, our grassroots are now older, and, and we still are understaffed. And so that is why that category is. To, to maintain that 4 in the future, our, our vehicles will be older when they come back in five years. Hopefully, we have some more staff by then to help offset that. If not, I don't believe we can hold on to a 4, because if you look at that score, we are a 3.98. There's not much margin there to maintain that 4.
Mr. Dippers. Does the fact that we don't have ladder truck anymore affect...
Yep.
The fact that we do have a high-rise in town?
Yep. The positives are those buildings got sprinkled over the last five years. The negatives are we don't have a ladder truck.
Elevator stream device?
Don't have that, yeah. I don't have, to get into the 1 category, you have to have six firefighters on every single apparatus, 24/7, which is why there's no 1s. Right. I mean, it just, it may be, it may be a standard somewhere, but it's not an achievable standard budgetary wise. And so you, as a council, need to figure out, how much do we gain or lose by, you know, if we got a 3, are we saving our residents enough that we could increase funding to, to, to get us to that 3? That's your decision to make that balance. I, I'm here to say that without finding a funding source, and I know the city is strapped in all that, without finding that funding source somehow to put into the fire department, we won't stay a 4. That, that is my professional, I'm shocked we are a 4. The city of Walla Walla is a 4, and they have 47 days staff. I, I, that means we are doing a good job, and that our water system is great, and the, the fire department, even though, you know, we're in that 40%, that, that's still really good when you look at how many people are worse in that, in that rating. But we have a lot of areas there we can improve, double three people and aging equipment.
Three paid staff.
I, I understand that, but you want to come and volunteer to do paperwork and do maintenance, and I mean, there's a line there of what I can expect out of my volunteers.
Harvey, well, not me.
Harvey, you're welcome.
Just give me a wrench.
It has to be, you have to be certified to turn that wrench.
I'm board certified.
Whether you're bored or not.
So can you have volunteers that aren't firefighters, that don't meet all the firefighter criteria, but can help in the office and things like that?
Yes.
Because I know some people who might be willing to do that.
I'd be, I'd be happy to have people come down. There, there's a program that you can, you can get on, insurance and all that sort of stuff, just do office work or answer phones or whatever. And we have a lady who comes in now, and this is Violet, so that helps.
Other questions for people?
And I'm not saying we're, we're ever going to get fully staffed, six people on a, on a truck, because if, when you look in the details, it has to be two engines, so that would be 12 people, 24 hours a day, plus two officers, plus backup officers, and I mean, some of it's not feasible on any of those countries.
So, so if you go back up to number 5, what's that going to be in addition, $10 per year?
That insurance company is, is giving.
I mean, is that the ballpark?
I, I would have no way to determine that, there's hundreds of insurance companies, some use the scale, some don't.
Well, it's not a thousand.
Well, for businesses, it could be.
But I'm talking about residents.
Just a quick question, don't go into too much detail, I'm curious about fire safety control, how can we improve that?
So fire safety control is, is inspecting businesses, education programs for seniors, education programs for youth, those types of things. It, it's time. You have to get into every business twice a year. The person who does the inspection has to be certified to get the best scope. We just don't have, the, the person who's qualified to do that has so many other things on his plate, you just can't get it.
Six-year transportation agreement?
I'll make, I'll make this very brief.
That would be a brief.
Very brief. State requires that local jurisdictions go through a signing process every year, and by June 30th, submit that plan to the state. That's what we're giving a preview of tonight, we'll be bringing this to you for a hearing, and hopefully approval on the 27th at our next meeting. Effectively, what we do every year is we go through, identify a lot of our transportation projects, and we've done this, we've seen this before in prior years. The way we structure ours is we have a six-year rehab reconstruction project list, that's our transportation improvement plan, but we changed this a little bit in that we also have a 10-year and a long-term project segment as well. Those we actually, in our plan, allow our, the committee on our funding, can actually move those into our six-year tip at a staff level. So that's a, that's an important flexibility, because sometimes we get funding for something that may not be on the six-year, that may be on the 10-year plan, and we will shove it on there and get it back. So that's, that's, that's more. We also have a chip seal program that is part of the six-year tip. It shows what we're doing right now in the dark here, this is what's going to happen this year, so that's a 2023. In the notes down below, it's important to note that this, all these projects include a pedestrian facility as a part of the project. So every one of those, you can see up there, we do have in the plan by this footnote that we will include pedestrian facilities if we have funding for it. That's important because most, or most of our funding will not allow us to take any money out of the company unless we have a particular project on this plan. Because we have a stove here, for example, on Fourth Street, and then we get funds because it's our six-year tip. So it's just important to have, and in addition to that, we include our chip seals as part of that six-year plan. You'll see this again a week from now, two weeks from now, at our next meeting. And if there are no questions, I should also make a quick comment here, that the TVD will help us in trying to address... And if there are no questions, I should also make a quick comment here, that the TVD will help us in trying to address.